Now councilors, just make sure you speak as your mics are running.
I'm testing, testing, testing.
I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll. Mayor Sorrell?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Fellini?
Here.
Councilor Marshon?
Here.
Councilor Pinalakis?
Here.
Councilor Hines?
Here.
Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Here.
Now we will have the invocation, excuse me, done by Father Pappas, St. Nicholas's Church.
Madam Mayor, Assistant Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Madam City Clerk, and council members and citizens of Portland, good evening and happy new year. Let us pray. Lord God of creation and Father Almighty, and Father of mankind, we praise your holy name and give humble thanks for all your tender and beneficent mercies. We ask you this evening to bless those who are accepting the responsibility of serving their fellow citizens. We seek your guidance in our concerns for our city. We seek the embrace of your safety for those who live here. We ask that you guide our civil authorities to create programs that will promote fellowship and camaraderie. We are also grateful, Lord, for the heritage that is ours in this great nation, that we are able to enjoy more freedom than any other people on earth. We humbly dedicate this evening to you, Lord, that you may in turn bless us with the beauty of righteousness, justice, and peace. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Now we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by members of the Portsmouth Fire and Police Department on guard.
Post, the colors. Step. Raise your hands.
At the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we're going to ask that Wendell Furrington from the Portsmouth High School Art Department, he is going to sing the Star Spangled Banner for us.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight, O'er the rampart we watched Were so gallantly streaming, And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Shoulder, march. Shoulder, march. Round, face. Forward, march. Forward, march.
I would like to thank Wendell Furrington for doing such a wonderful job he always does, and also the Portsmouth Police and Fire on Guards. It just shows you how far Portsmouth has come with all of these wonderful things, and we do appreciate each one of them. Now we're down to the oath of office, which our city clerk will bestow. The first one is the Fire Commission, Commissioner Michael K. Hughes.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you, Michael Hughes, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as Fire Commissioner of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Police Commissioner, Commissioner John D. Kelly, better known as Jack.
Good. That's what we like. Please raise your right hand to take the oath of office. Do you, John Kelly, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as Police Commissioner of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now we're down to the school board members, and I'd like to have them come forward. Ann W. Walker, Nancy Cleber, John E. Lyons Jr., Raymond Bowles, and Roseanne Clark. Oh.
Ann first.
One at a time.
Sorry. Please raise your right hand to take the oath of office. Do you, Ann Walker, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as school board member of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God? Congratulations. Nancy? Please raise your right hand to take the oath of office. Do you, Nancy Novlin Cleber, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Yes, you are, John. Please raise your right hand to take the oath of office. Do you, John Lyons, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a school board member of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. School board member Raymond Bowles was unable to be here this evening. He was ill. So we will ask Roseanne Clark to please come forward. Hi, Roseanne. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Roseanne Clark, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as school board member of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Now we're down to the city council members. Are you going to be taking one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Jo M. Grassel. Oh, Harold first? Okay. Very good. Harold, you're first.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Harold Whitehouse, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Edward Reynolds.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Edward Reynolds, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Next one is John W. Hines.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, John Hines, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, John.
Laura C. Pinalakis. And if there's any families sitting out there, you come right up with your candidates. Oh, no longer candidates.
We'll wait till everyone is in place. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Laura Pinalakis, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God? Congratulations.
Now we're down to, wait there. We're down to Steve Marshon.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Steve Marshon, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God? Congratulations.
Thomas G. Ferini.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Thomas Fellini, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
Joanne Grassel.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Joanne Grassel, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as city councillor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Assistant Mayor Alex Hanson.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Alex Hanson, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as assistant mayor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, in accordance to the best of your ability, agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the City of Portsmouth and the State of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Mayor Evelyn Sorrell. And I'm going to ask my family to come up too.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Evelyn Sorrell.
I, Evelyn Sorrell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
As mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
In accordance to the best of my abilities.
In accordance to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the City of Portsmouth.
And the laws of the City of Portsmouth.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would like to welcome everyone here tonight. Families, friends, neighbors, councilors, school board members, police and fire commissioners. This is not the first time that I have been before you to proudly accept the office of the mayor of the City of Portsmouth. But it is just as thrilling as it was the first time that I accepted this great honor bestowed upon me by the citizens of Portsmouth. I am so very grateful to the residents for once again choosing me to be their mayor and for the privilege of leading our wonderful city for the next two years. But I continue to believe that the mayor is only as effective as the city council that she is a part of, and only as effective as the city manager who stands beside her. I am so fortunate to have all of these, all of these components in the new council being sworn in tonight, and in John Bohinko, who as far as I am concerned is one of the finest city managers I have ever known. Together with the wonderful teamwork and cooperation that our city is known for, we can achieve great things to preserve our quality of life here in Portsmouth for the citizens of today and the citizens of tomorrow. Over the years, I have taken great pride in being an ever faithful watchdog who works to preserve and safeguard our city for its residents. That will never change. I will always keep the best interest of all of the citizens of Portsmouth foremost in any decisions that I make. I am very proud to be called the people's mayor. It is a title I cherish and will continue to work hard to live up to. Tonight, as we look forward to the new year and beyond, our city is in very secure financial position, despite the burden of the statewide property tax and other factors beyond our control. This is due to the efforts of the city council and our city manager and the hard work of the city departments themselves. And as I, not standing, I'm sitting, as I sit here before you tonight, my number one goal remains the same as it has been for the last six years as I've served as your mayor. We must see, and I say must again, see the repeal of the statewide property tax. Everyone is suffering under the statewide property tax. The city's tax rate dropped, but property values increased, especially with the recent revaluation. The news reports show this is happening all across our state. We need to get rid of the statewide property tax altogether. We need the state to give local control of tax dollars back to Portsmouth and other communities while supporting education through targeted aid to the needy communities. And this can be done without the statewide property tax and instead using the other state income already earmarked for education. Portsmouth will continue to lead the coalition of communities in fight against this horrible tax. It is very strong. The coalition is very, very strong. It's growing stronger every day. We have made progress in the legislation, but the problem will not be solved until the statewide property tax is gone forever. In the meantime, here in Portsmouth, we passed the most generous elderly exemption program in the state. Applications for elderly exemption can be obtained at the Applications for elderly exemption can be obtained at the assesses' office at City Hall, and I pray you all come forward. No one's too proud. If you need it, come forward. As mayor, I also will continue to do my utmost to hold the line on spending. I believe we did an excellent job holding the line in the last budget. The only departments requesting a supplementary appropriation were the fire and the police, the two most important departments in our city. We need them ready at all times. But it will be much more difficult to hold the budget down in the coming years, given the increases in fixed costs like health insurance and the cost of living raises. At the same time, we must provide certain services to the residents of Portsmouth such as water, sewer, snow, trash removal, road, and other infrastructure maintenance and improvements. The cost to provide these necessary services are going up, too. This is another reason that I believe is important to support our capital improvement program. This is necessary to improve our infrastructure and also look to our water system because we will be needing more wells. As much as the work is funded with state and federal grant money in conjunction with the city's smaller contribution, by making a city investment even during tight budget times, we reap much larger rewards by taking advantage of this available state federal grant money. I also believe that in order to preserve our quality of life, we must continue to put a little money aside for our conservation lands to protect against overdevelopment. Once again, my goal is to see us finally move forward on the new library. The funding has already been approved and has been in the capital budget for many years. The people overwhelmingly voted for it in a non-binding referendum. After reviewing possible sites all around Portsmouth, the 11-member library committee voted for the JFK. There was only just one negative vote out of the 11. Anyone who attended the public hearing regarding the library knows the citizens of Portsmouth overwhelmingly spoke in favor of the JFK site and the building of a new library for our city. And yet, there are some who continue to suggest alternate sites. These include the McIntyre Federal Building Site, which will not be available for years. The time is moved. The time to move is now. The reality is that we don't have the money to take over a renovation of other sites that have been suggested. I want you all to know, sitting out there tonight, maybe I'm going to give you a little history lesson here, but I don't think you know about this. The community will need to carefully weigh its desire for the redevelopment site to house public space, which will not generate any local tax dollars. The library would not bring any tax dollars at the McIntyre Building. The children's museum will not bring any, and you have your post office that doesn't pay either. I want you all to know that we have $341 million. Our 12% of all assessed property in the city is tax exempt. This equals to over $6 million in taxes that are not collected because of this exemption. So I really wish you would think twice about what's going where because the monies are not there. Those are my primary goals for the next two years. In addition, I would like to see our neighborhoods remain strong, and I look forward to our volunteer boards and commission continuing their important work on behalf of our city. We have a wonderful tradition here in Portsmouth, and that is working together to solve problems that range in scope, from providing relief to the homeless to caring for our neighbors. This is all done in the spirit of cooperation, and I believe this tradition of caring and cooperation will do us well over the next two years. I would like to close by saying that, as always, I am so proud of the citizens of our wonderful city. We have accomplished great things and will continue to do so. As your mayor and with the help of the city council and our city manager, I want to continue guiding our city in a direction that reflects our character and our spirit of togetherness and community. With your help and input, we most certainly will succeed. I love you all. Thank you. Now we're down to the city manager, and we're going to talk about the acceptance of the rules and audit of the city council.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The only item for action under my name is the acceptance of rules and order of the city council. Those have been presented to the city council for adoption. It should be noted that any time throughout the term of this council, those rules and order can be amended.
May the mayor move to accept the rules and order of the city council?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're down to the mayor, and you all have your committee assignments, each city councillor. If there's any questions, please don't hesitate to come up and see me. Ned, I do have quite a few things to give you regarding the fourth, okay? And...
Is there a motion or a protest?
Yes.
Some move?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we will be ending this with a benediction by Father Pappas, St. Nicholas's Church.
Please stand. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we close this evening in peace and as humble children seeking wisdom as we endeavor to find ways to fulfill our promise to serve. Bless all that we say and do and make us instruments of all your will. We also pray that this gathering has been one of inspiration and uplift. With our work done, we again must part and go our many ways, and may God rest and abide within us all, for now and forevermore. Amen and congratulations.
Thank you, Father. Before we adjourn, I would like to announce that on January 12th, 2004, we will be having work session on the Worth Law. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd like to invite everyone to a reception out in the Portsmouth room for refreshment.